Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is July 22, 2025. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a brief invocation. As we gather to serve our community, may we be guided by wisdom, compassion, and integrity. Let our discussions be fair, our decisions just, and our actions united in purpose. May we always strive to foster understanding, collaboration, and progress for the good of all. Amen. I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communication Council TV operator, Evan Russell. Thank you for your assistance, Evan. Vice Mayor Fisher and Ms. Lisa Duval have an excused absence this evening. And I would turn to Mr. Sullivan at this point for motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, Your Honor, I have read and reviewed the July 8, 2025 council meeting and workshop minutes. I find them in order, and I move for approval.
Okay. Once, um, excuse me. The motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay. We have no appointments or special presentations this evening. We have no public hearing this evening. If, at this point in the agenda, if anyone would like to address council, anyone in the audience who would like to address council on any of the issues related to, I'm sorry, legislation that's on tonight's agenda, they may come down at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak before council? Okay. Seeing none, I will, just as form, announce that anyone who does want to speak is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address and comment should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the agenda, tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting.
Is your time about something on the agenda?
It's close up work.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You were gonna, we're gonna let you do that, yeah, later. Right, yeah. All right. Where are we? We are up two ordinances in second reading. We have one ordinance, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes, Your Honor, I have an ordinance in second reading to rezone 2325 Wilmington Pike from O Office District to BP Business Park District, Planning Commission Case Number PC This is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Okay. Mr. Chakowski, do you have any comments on this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This particular ordinance would address that the current office designation, which is on the site, is a narrow-focused zoning district that tailors to professional office and thereby limits supporting, excuse me, and their supported uses. The proposed Business Park District expands the allowable uses under the subject properties to be in better alignment with the uses commonly expected within a business park environment. This is the second reading. We would ask that council adopt this matter this evening. I would defer to Mr. Robillard, our Director of Planning and Development, for any additional comments.
Mr. Robillard?
Only if you have any questions.
Okay. All right. No questions? Okay. Do we call the roll?
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for funding from the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Southern Boulevard Improvement Projects and the Wilmington Pike Resurfacing Project. This is being requested by the Engineering Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bergstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. As stated, this resolution will allow the city to apply for two construction projects to the Ohio Public Works Commission. The first is an improvement project on Southern Boulevard, south of Stroop Road, which would involve curb replacement and resurfacing. The other one is a project on Wilmington Pike, Smithville Road to North Corporation Limit, essentially in front of Kettering Business Park. This, the funding for this one would help to offset the local funds from a federally funded project that we have here scheduled for the next couple of years. Have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing expanded scope of services under the agreement with Volkert, Inc. The estimated cost is $27,000, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Bergstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is currently under contract with Volkert, Inc. for right-of-way acquisition services. They're currently acquiring right-of-way for the Marshall Road Project, which is scheduled for construction next year. When we entered into the original contract with Volkert, the contract language did allow us to expand their services to other projects as needed, so that we have two projects coming up that are both federally funded that we need to acquire right-of-way for, and so we are requesting the additional work to be put under Volkert's contract. First is for a shared use path on State Route 835, Allah Research Boulevard. This is a project that would construct a shared use path from County Line Road to the entrance to the Sixth River Development that was recently funded through ODOT. Then we have another project, also in Research Park area, to construct a sidewalk on Founder's Drive that was funded by MVRPC. Both of these projects are scheduled for construction in 2026 and 2027, and the time is now to move forward with right-of-way acquisition. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining, negotiated quotes to contract for replacement of the main water service to the north building and water valves located at the government center in separation of the domestic water service and fire line service for the city-occupied spaces within Building 46. This is an estimated cost of $770,900. It's requested by Public Service Department. I move for its approval.
Second.
Comments? Mr. Bergstresser?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Essentially, what we're doing with this piece of legislation is combining two separate CIP projects that have similar scopes. The first one is a 2025 CIP project that is city-funded that will replace the main water service to the north building in this complex, and install additional several water valves for the south building under this complex. The other project is a project out of the Kettering Business Park, specifically in Building 46, which also houses the Kettering Courts Building. That project would separate the water service from the courts and the rest of the building in order to position the unused portions of Building 46 for future development. We do have $1.25 million in state capital appropriations that are set aside for improvements to Building 46, and this project would utilize some of those dollars to finish the project. Be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 11203-25 regarding capital equipment purchases to authorize the purchase of a larger, of a large, larger equipment trailer for the Streets Department. The estimated cost and the funds available are $78,500. This is requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bergstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. Some good news on this one. We had several, several of our capital equipment purchases in our Public Service Department this year come in under budget, and so we would like to utilize the budget savings from other purchases within that department to purchase a larger trailer for the, or replacement for a larger trailer that we use to haul our paving equipment and skidsteers. The trailer we currently utilize is in need of repairs. It's past its useful life. Therefore, we'd like to purchase a larger trailer with the underspending from other vehicles. Be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 11203-25 regarding capital equipment purchases to authorize an increased amount for purchase of a crew cab truck for the Parks Maintenance Department. This also has the estimated cost and amount budgeted equal at $79,466, and this is being requested by Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Thanks. Mr. Bergstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is another capital equipment purchase, this time for our Parks Maintenance Department. We are in the process of purchasing a new crew cab truck for the Parks Maintenance Division. However, this, this specific truck came in over budget, and also the, so we don't have enough funds left in that budget line item for outfit. So this resolution would amend the previous resolution from earlier this year, which authorized the purchase of this, to also include the outfit for the truck we are purchasing. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to amend Resolution 11276-25 regarding the purchase of irrigation controllers and installation of an irrigation system at Poland Farm. Estimated cost is $154,260. That is the amount available and is requested by the Parks and Cultural Arts Department. I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Bergstresser?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yep, last one. This resolution, similar to the previous one, will amend a previous resolution that you passed earlier this year regarding the installation of irrigation upgrades at Poland Farm. Currently, we utilize hand watering at Poland Farm to maintain the landscaping. This project would bring the irrigation at the Poland Farm grounds up to our current standards that we use in other parts of the city. Would automate the system that we use, reduce water usage, things like that, less staff time. Unfortunately, when we went out for bids for this project, the bids we received back were higher than what we had budgeted, so therefore, we'd like to utilize underspending in other parks CIP areas, specifically some fencing replacement and miscellaneous concrete work to offset the increased cost for this project. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds from the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Ohio Division of EMS, at a total cost of $2,915.48. This is requested by the Fire Department. I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. The Kettering Fire Department utilizes a comprehensive records management system that meets state requirements for emergency medical service reporting. As a result of that, that enables the department to apply for an annual grant from the Ohio Division of EMS. The grant funds will be used to purchase replacement iPads and related accessories for electronic incident reporting, as well as some other emergency medical equipment. The total award, it's relatively small, $2,915, but no matching funds are required by the city of Kettering. I'm sure if you have any questions, either I or the chief can answer.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to dispose of a retired 2010 Sutphen Shield Fire Engine. This is requested by the Fire Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Tell us more, Mr. Greason.
Yes, Your Honor. The Fire Department has removed a 2010 Sutphen Shield Fire Engine from service as part of our Fire Department Apparatus Replacement Plan. It's, it's a 2010. It also has over, over 90,000 miles. I want to compliment the chief and his team. They did extensive research about what the value of this and the best way to dispose of it. We're pleased to report that Dayton Fire Department has offered to purchase this fire engine for $100,000. We think that, based on our research, is a responsible price for us to accept and recommend that we do so. Be glad to answer any questions.
I've, I've got a question. Is a Sutphen Shield, is that a brand name, or is that a type of?
Sutphen is a, a fire app, engine and manufacturer. Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Advantage Police Supply for the purchase of Comtech NIB headsets and adapters for the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit. This is being requested by the Police Department. The cost and amount budgeted is $31,599.50. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. First, the funds to pay for this equipment that I'm going to discuss are from federal equitable sharing funds that are paid to TCSU or the Tactical Crime Suppression Unit. They are held by the city as a fiduciary, and they're for the use of TCSU activities, not other uses necessarily. The TCSU director is planning to purchase 25 Comtech Six NIB headsets. Let's just say headsets. For the Kettering Regional SWAT Team, those headsets have a total cost of $31,599.50, which is the current quote through Advantage Police Supply. Chief, if you'd like to add anything, or both available, answer any questions you may have.
Only if you have any questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions of either? Okay, then call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit the 2025 Annual Action Plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and execute the required certifications to enable the city to receive Community Development Block Grant Funds. Estimated cost $1,083,806.43, and is requested by the Planning and Development Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chakowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a result of the city of Kettering's participation in the CDG, CDBG program, each year, Kettering must submit an annual action plan detailing what projects will be undertaken during the particular year. The city of Kettering will have over $1 million available, with $509,000 as our annual CDBG entitlement, $53,000 in loan repayments and other program income, as well as $521,000 in reprogrammed funds. I defer again to Mr. Robillard for any additional comments on this particular matter.
Tom, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. Some of the major initiatives that we're going to be doing is, includes rehabilitation assistance for income-eligible homeowners, support for microenterprises and small businesses, fair housing activities, first-time homebuyer counseling, and funding for the Senior Services Coordinator. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Kudos to the staff, because I understand there are new requirements for certification, some new loopholes that come with this, or new rules around this from the current administration of Washington. Thank you for the extra work. I know it took a lot of extra reading and legal reviews, and Angela put a lot of time in this, and just kudos to the staff for the extra lift it took to secure these dollars for our residents. So thank you for that.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
I should have deferred to the mayor.
The CDBG were, were very concerned about whether or not those, that funding would be renewed, and fortunately, it was at the last minute, and it provides a lot of important services, if you pointed out. Okay, should we call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Mayor Laner, in order to comply with the ethics laws and avoid the appearance of impropriety, I will excuse myself and leave the council chambers and not participate in council's consideration of Item 12 on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'll give you a minute to leave.
So I will be reading that resolution at the top of many pages here of real estate information, so give me one moment to catch up with that.
I have it, I have it ready.
Mr. Sudditt?
Oh, it's yours. Sorry, I got confused because...
You get the next one.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to declare a surplus, a surplus in approving an agreement to sell approximately three acres of city-owned property along East David Road and to purchase the real property, property commonly known as 2600 Wilmington Pike. This is requested by the city's city manager's office at a total cost of $605,000, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Greason, you wanna?
I'm going to ask Mr. Chakowski to go over this.
Thank you, sir. Madam Mayor, members of council, this particular legislation further advances the Wilmington Pike Improvement Plan, and it supports the future development of vacant lands, and, excuse me, and supports the future development of vacant lands owned by the city of Kettering at the intersection of Hempstead Station and David Road. Upon its passage, this legislation will authorize the acquisition of the former Sixa facility located at 2600 Wilmington Pike, while also selling three acres of vacant city-owned land at Hempstead Station and David Road to Sixa. As a result of these transactions, the city will gain control of a well-known and recognizable developed parcel in Wilmington Pike. Sixa's ownership of the vacant land will set the stage for their return to the city of Kettering by way of a new, future, second facility focused on supporting the unique needs of pet owners. Please note that the land at David and Hempstead was purchased using EMS funds, and as a result, proceeds from the sale, $255,000, will be credited back to the EMS fund for that fund's use. Happy to answer any questions or concerns that council may have on this particular legislation.
Thank you. Does anyone have any concerns or comments? Okay. Hearing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes.
Now, it's my turn.
Okay. Should we give Mr. Sullivan a chance to come back in? Could someone? It's still your turn.
Will he read the next resolution then, if he's coming back?
No, he'll be busy. You go ahead.
Okay.
If you're eager. You go ahead.
Is it mine or yours?
Yeah, we're gonna let it chill over here. Okay.
I kept jumping the gun, so... Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, State of Ohio, during fiscal year ending December 31, 2025. This is being requested by the Finance Department, and the estimated cost is $607,915.48. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Greason, now you get it.
Okay. All right. So now we're dealing with the appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering for the items you already approved tonight, and that includes the real estate transaction and then the grant from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. So as it relates to the real estate agreement, this is a supplemental appropriation of $605,000 for the purchase and sales agreement that you already authorized with the Society for the Improvement of Conditions for Stray Animals, Sixa, where we will be purchasing the property, as Mr. Chakowski already outlined, at 2600 Wilmington Pike for $605,000, while also selling the three acres at the intersection of David Road and Hempstead Station for $255,000. There is a net outlay of approximately $350,000 from the city because of this transaction of two properties. However, the purchase is recorded at the gross amount of $605,000, and so that's why the appropriation has to be that amount. The net $350,000 outlay will come from funds previously committed by the city council to economic development purposes, and as Mr. Chakowski outlined earlier, the land sale at David and Hempstead was originally purchased using EMS funds, and as a result, the proceeds from the sale will be credited back to the EMS funds in the amount of $255,000. So this appropriation does all. The second piece is appropriating the $2,915.48 that was accepted from the Ohio Department of Public Safety for the Priority One Training and Equipment Grant. Those are the funds for the iPads and related EMS equipment that we use in electronic incident reporting. No city match for that, so that's an appropriation straight of those, that roughly $2,900. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and recommend approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Laner?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our resolutions for this evening. We have no ordinances in first reading. Mrs. Haislip, do we have any certifications and petitions this evening?
We do not, Your Honor, have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll then move to the manager's report and community update. Take it away.
Thank you, Your Honor. We want you to join us this Thursday, as well as on July 29, for our community hot dog roasts. I think for all of us who attended July 16 at Poland Farm, it was a great success, a great partnership with the Partners for Healthy Youth and the Kettering School District, and a lot of families came out to enjoy some free cone of ice and a hot dog, and interact with each other and learn about their community. So we encourage people to attend the hot dog roast. We'd always like to highlight one of our upcoming Frey's Pavilion Events. Bacon Fest is Saturday, August 2, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The gates open at 4:00. This is a free community festival, and there'll be free live music, and of course, there'll be some bacon.
Piece of bacon.
There's Optimist Kids Day in the Park, Delco Park, Saturday, also August 2, 9 to 1. A wonderful event with carnival games, prizes, face painting, open to kids 5 to 12. Those kids must be accompanied by a parent, grandparent, or guardian, but we certainly want you and your families to attend this wonderful event that we do in partnership with the Optimists. We have no shortage of events in August. August 5 is a wonderful event. Couple notes on this, National Night Out, where we really focus on the police and community partnerships. There are a bunch of activities that I think families and kids and anybody would enjoy. We also will have the Air Force Band of Flight playing that night in Frey's Pavilion, and so it'll be a great opportunity. Chief, you want to add anything?
I appreciate all the work that our staff has done on this, and as the city manager said, it is always a great time, so please, everybody, come out and enjoy yourselves. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that it for you?
Nope.
Nope.
If you're bored by those events, you can come to Art on the Commons, 37th Annual Art on the Commons. It's our Fine Arts and Crafts Festival. That's August 10, 11 to 5. We also have our Good Neighbor Award that we are seeking nominations for. So, these are the folks that go the extra mile to help their neighbors and make their community welcoming for all. And I know Mr. South works hard with the Board of Community Relations. He might have something to add about the Good Neighbor Award, but I would say nominations are due by August 31st. We want to make everyone aware that blood pressure clinic dates continue. There are a number of July, August, and September dates that are on your screen. And one of the things that we should highlight in the summertime in particular when people go on vacation is that we offer as a service to our community Vacation House Checks, where the Kettering Police Department will check your houses when you're temporarily out of town or on vacation. How you can register for those is by submitting a request at our website, which you can see the link online or on the screen. We always encourage people during the summertime to do block parties. It's a terrific way to meet or greet and get acquainted with your neighbors and build a sense of community. We support that, and we do that by permitting those through our Engineering Department. They can check the website or call the Engineering Department at the number on the screen. And lastly, another award, this is for Neighborhood Pride, where we want people to nominate a neighbor a business that you think is deserving of a Neighborhood Pride Award because of the excellent job that they do taking care of their property, representing Kettering by having a beautiful place. Nominations are accepted online or by contacting Lindsay Curry, who is our volunteer administrator. Your Honor, that's my community report. Don't miss one of these or all of these events. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Sounds like no one has ever heard of the expression, "The lazy days of summer" around here.
Not on this staff, that is for sure.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We will now, at this point, if anyone in the audience would like to come forth and discuss any of the issues on your mind, not just tonight's legislation, I'll get you first. I'd like to remind you to give your name and address before you address your remarks to the members of council. And let's see if there's anything else. Five-minute limit, yeah, that was the other important one. Okay. If you'd like to come down, welcome, come to the podium and...
Hi, I'm Keith Locker, 1627 Willamette. I think I've lived there 32 years. The house next door to me has been a rental property for the last 20 years. Property maintenance has gone down on it horribly. I did try to contact the proper management company that handles it. They did not return my calls. I contacted Planning and Engineering, turned it in two months ago. Maybe I'm being impatient, but there's been nothing. I talked to the sales manager, leasing manager, last week. He's not aware of any outdoor projects coming up to fix it up a little bit. May I give you some samples?
Thank you very much. Pass this round.
1625 Willamette. Mine was 1627.
Thank you.
Split these up and then swap them back. So, okay. You can proceed, or you want to just wait?
No, I just wanted to...
Okay. Well, you've come to the, you've gone through the right order of things. You've reached out, obviously.
I tried being the Good Neighbor, then I tried being through the City of Kettering, and now I'm here.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if Planning and Development will want to make any comments, any zoning around this point, or...
I'm curious about, did it pass inspection?
They need, they need to look at all of that, but I'm sure someone's going to ask you for additional information, so.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone else wish to address council at this point? I think we have some folks from Clothes That Work. Come on down. Welcome.
Thank you.
And welcome to Kettering.
Thank you very much. I'm Cindy Garner, and the Executive Director of Clothes That Work, and we just got occupancy at our new place, 2824 Wilmington Pike. We're very excited, so thank you. I want to thank you all for giving us a few minutes tonight to let you learn about Clothes That Work. And before I forget, I want to also introduce Jane Snyder, who is our Development Director, who's with me tonight. Clothes That Work was founded in 1998 to fill a vital need for women entering or returning to the workforce during the late 1990s Welfare Reform Act, with one vision driving the movement, which was to provide clothing, education, and empowerment for job seekers. In 2023, Clothes That Work expanded their services to provide professional development and interview clothing assistance to not just women, but also men and independent teens. Since our founding, Clothes That Work has served 45,451 clients, and we are not slowing down. Just this past year, 2024, our workforce education and clothing programs saw more than 4,200 clients. That's a 30% increase over 2023. Clothes That Work provides professional development workshops along with clothing assistance to achieve a holistic approach to job readiness. We accomplish this through our three programs, the Clothing and Coaching Program, our Mobile Outreach Initiative, and the Workforce Education Initiative. The Clothing and Coaching Program is Clothes That Work's signature program, offering job seekers appropriate interview, business, and business casual workplace clothing with the help of a trained volunteer, a client coach who guides and instructs the job seeker on the best practices for interviews. Job seekers leave appointments feeling very confident and ready for the interview or the workplace, plus they really look good. So, our mobile unit was established in 2023 in time for our 25th anniversary. This is a 38-foot-long mobile unit that has been at the forefront of expanding our reach into other communities around the region. These vital professional development services are able to be received in five counties surrounding Montgomery Counties. Clark, Miami, Green, Hamilton, and Montgomery are all the ones that we're in our service area right now. Lastly, our Workforce Education Initiative provides workshops and training on enduring skills that job seekers need to maintain employment once they are hired for a job. Workshop topics include resume building, interview preparation, conflict resolution, and assertive communication, just to name a few. From job seekers to tenured employees, professional development never goes out of style. That's our tagline on our logo. Clothes That Work has been a vital community resource for the past 27 years, and we are so excited to continue serving the community from our new location in Kettering. This new location will provide a more comfortable experience for our clients as well as room for our organization to expand to meet the growing demand of our services. Additionally, we have a boutique, an upscale resale boutique, that's open to the public and also serves as a resource for our clients. Our new space features a huge increase in our retail footprint. We're roughly doubling the floor space of the space that we had at the Job Center, and we encourage the Kettering community to shop and to experience this vital clothing resource. We welcome everyone to come and check out our new location on Wednesday, August 6, from 9 to 6:00 p.m. at our community open house. To the city officials of Kettering, I would first like to thank you for working with us the last several months to make our dream of a new home for our organization a reality. We received our occupancy, as I said earlier, this afternoon, and I would also like to extend an invitation to all of you for our ribbon-cutting ceremony on Tuesday, August 5. That'll be from 4 to 7:00 p.m., and we hope that you can attend and help us celebrate this momentous occasion for our organization. Thank you for allowing me to share a few words about Clothes That Work and our impactful programs, and thank you for providing such a welcoming space for Clothes That Work to thrive. We can't wait to hit the ground running.
Thank you so much, Cindy. I have to commend you. You, Clothes That Work, were able to do something I've been trying to do for 50 years, and that's cleaned my husband's closet out. And finally, I said, you know, you can take these to Clothes That Work, and someone who's applying for a job for the first time can actually get employed. He thought that was so cool, he actually threw out about three-quarters of what he owned.
There you go.
You wouldn't know it looking at his closet still, but so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
And thank you, seriously. Thank you for everything you do for the community. It's a unique program, and we're very proud to have it with us.
Well, we're just so excited to be here in Kettering. Thank you again.
And to see good friends like Jane. We'll move on to... Is there anyone else who wish to speak to council? Okay, seeing them, we will now move on to council reports and start with Mr. Sullivan.
All right. It has been a busy couple weeks, but I wanted to brag about my kids real quick. We belong to Marinal, which is a pool in Kettering, a private pool in Kettering, and my girls swim, all three swim for the swim team, and Marinal has finished dead last every year in our league since 2013.
I was going to say, we don't allow talking about your kids' successes.
I know, but it's a Kettering pool, and I thought, this is historic. We finished second to last this year, so I was really proud that my kids were part of that. We're a scrappy little Kettering pool, but... Also, I want to talk about, I'm a teacher at Fairmont High School, and my kids don't like when I talk about this. Back-to-school is coming very soon. We like to do our online shopping for school supplies because it's so easy and convenient, but I think it gets kids more excited if you take them to a store. My daughters love going to Myers and buying their stuff, so if I can steal a line from the great Tony Kleepes and Bob Scott, shop local. You can do a little Amazon shopping, but try to go into the store and get kids excited about clothes and binders and all that stuff, because my kids are, they're looking forward to school a little bit more, I think, because of those shopping trips. So, that's it for me.
Thank you.
When I was thinking of something to say tonight, because I figured all the events would be covered by the city manager, I was digging into some stuff about Kettering, some of our data and that kind of thing, because we're unique in so many ways, and I found out that our total crime rate is 37% lower than the national average, and violent crime is 86% below the national rate. So, that's something to be proud of. It's pretty good.
Thanks, Derek Chief.
I think it's, yeah, it's a result of great police and good partnership with the residents, and the National Night Out really helps to facilitate that, and it's well-attended, and it's a good community-building event, and I just thought I'd share that tidbit. That's all for me.
Thank you, Jill.
I have nothing prepared, other than I would echo what Mr. Sullivan said about shopping Kettering. I also echo about our fine police department. That is what makes Kettering a great place to live, okay, as compared to other communities in this area in the state.
This week, the Board of Community Relations met last night and continued their work on programs that just help ensure that Kettering is a welcoming community for everybody that moves here and lives here and chooses this community. And that includes the Hispanic Heritage Month, which is September 15 to October 15. They get a special mid-month, mid-month. We're already working with the schools in preparation for that program with students. Also, the Good Neighbor Award, which City Manager Greason mentioned earlier. We've already received our first dozen submissions for that, but there's still plenty of time. If you have a neighbor who's done something really special on your street or your block, we want to hear about it to recognize those special neighbors as that approaches through August. And finally, welcome to Clothes That Work. As somebody who gets to work with them professionally and see the work firsthand, I've been there for fittings, I've been there with clients as they've put on that suit for the first time, and seen them in the months after to see how that experience changed their life. It's exciting to see that, to come to our community as you move to grow out of that space. I'm next door to my office on Ebenezer Moses. I'm jealous you get to come to Kettering. I'm still on Ebenezer Moses, but congratulations and looking forward to having you here in the neighborhood.
Thank you. I guess it's left up to me. We're kind of short-handed here tonight, so I just want to echo everything that everyone has already said tonight. I would like to give a special boost to Kids' Day in the Park. Mr. Greason, I think, mentioned it in his report. Unfortunately, we are on vacation the first week in August, so I'm going to miss it, but I'm encouraging as many people as possible to take their kids or their grandkids there. It's just really a fun day that's about kids and just kids enjoying activities that unfortunately, you know, with the screens in their hands, there's not going to be a single screen on the property that day, and kids are going to have to color and paint and throw things and just have a great time, so I really encourage folks to go. As we start talking about school getting back geared up, it's time for me to start reminding people how important it is that children go to school every single day, that they should be, they have to have a temperature of 102 to keep home. I've just declared that. Now that they think, oh, 99.6, I get to stay home. School attendance is the one thing that we have control over that we know from every bit of evidence makes a huge difference in children's success in life, so make sure your kids go to school and start talking about it now. Okay, I think that's it for this evening, and any other business anyone wants to bring And if there's no further business to come before council at this point, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be August 12. I will be back in town well before that, and this meeting is adjourned.